The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. 20 present, you have quorum.
Quorum being present, we are blessed today to be led in prayer by Minister Highland Stewart And I tell you what, Pastor Highland is doing me a big favor today. I saw him a week or two ago and I asked him to come down here and say the prayer and open us up, so he's blessed us today to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I kind of honor and privilege to stand before you. I think about when I was 16 years old and moved to the city of St. Louis from the city of Houston, Texas. And now I'm 67, as I stand before you. I've experienced three marriages, a good fourth one, and so many things that had happened, both in the city and county of St. Louis. And all I could see was just the city of St. Louis going to the western boundaries of North County, South County, and West County. And there's always been a thing on me that that needs to happen. And then when I see the economic things that are happening all over the country, all over the world, it would be no better time for us to come together and just pray for what God has in store for us. So I will, as I look at the legislative body here in this building, this great building, the city of St. Louis, it's an awesome responsibility to pray over you because we're all individuals as to come together collectively and just know that God's want your very best. So let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, thank you for this Friday morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come before your people, knowing Father God they have tests and things they need to get accomplished this year of 2022. Father, I pray that they will leave their big eyes at home and bring their little use to this building where they can collectively come together and solve the things that need to be solved, build up the things that need to be built up, and share, share, and love one another. That is the greatest commandment that God has given us, is to love one another. Father, in this report, I would pray that this board of aldermanic people will continue to share with Mr. Reed thoughts, ideas, and everything that would make the city of St. Louis, the metropolitan area, a better place to be. Father, I ask this in your name.
Let's give, let's give Pastor a big round of applause. Thank you so much for leading us off in prayer today. Today is a special day, so we are going to spend with our regular order of business to take up our second reading of resolutions calendar, line item 21. Madam Clerk?
A special report from the Engrossment, Rules, and Credentials Committee report.
Alderman, Alderman from the seventh, you're recognized on the report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Yesterday, the Rules, Credentials, and Engrossments Committee met to review the qualifications of Alderman-elect Mike Grass. After rigorous questioning and review of the documents, we determined that Mr. Grass meets the qualifications to serve as 28th Ward Alderman, and we approved his credentials with the due pass recommendation.
Alderman from the seventh, would you like to make a motion that we adopt your recommendation?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adopt the credentials of Alderman-elect Mike Grass to be 28th Ward Alderman.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventh, signed by Alderman from 25th, and a whole host of others in a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. You've had your first successful vote, Alderman from the 28th. It gets more difficult after. All right, we will retire our regular order of business. Madam Clerk, please, please call the roll. Well, hold on for a second, Madam Clerk, let me do, I got it out of order, actually. Alderman from 28th, would you like to approach the dais?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alana Mejias, and I am an Associate Judge in St. Clair County, Illinois. I have the pleasure of knowing Mike as he is my husband's best friend. We were in each other's weddings. And even more exciting for me today is that I am the first female Hispanic judge in St. Clair County swearing in the first Hispanic Alderman. And to make this day extra special, it is his birthday. Shall we?
Yeah.
All right.
Would you like to, would you like your wife or anyone to stand?
Oh, well, it looks like she's stalling. You guys want to stand? Allison, you want to stand up? This is my wife, everybody. I know I know a lot of people here.
Hi, Dr. Walsh. All right. Closer. Okay.
Oh, sure. You just want to read it.
I, Michael Grass.
I, Michael Grass.
Of the city of St. Louis in the state of Missouri.
Of the city of St. Louis in the state of Missouri.
Having been elected by the qualified voters.
Having been elected by the qualified voters.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
To the position of member of the Board of Aldermen from the 28th Ward.
To the position of member of Board of Aldermen from the 28th Ward.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
And am not subject to any of the disqualifications.
And am not subject to any of the disqualifications.
Named in the charter.
Named in the charter.
For the office or employment I am about to assume.
For the office or employment I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city.
That I will be influenced.
That I will be influenced.
Only by the consideration.
Only by the consideration.
Of fitness in the appointment.
Of fitness in the appointment.
Promotion.
Promotion.
Demotion.
Demotion.
Suspension.
Suspension.
Or discharge.
Or discharge.
Of officers or employees.
Of officers or employees.
That I will not expend.
That I will not expend.
Nor authorize the expenditures.
Nor authorize the expenditures.
Of money.
Of money.
Otherwise than for adequate consideration.
Otherwise than for adequate consideration.
And efficient service.
And efficient service.
To the city.
To the city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Or employment.
Now, if the President and Vice President, excuse me, the floor leader, majority floor leader, Alderman from the 10th, would you join me up here?
I don't know if he wants me with a sharp optic or anything.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. I just can't see him. There you go. All right. Thank you. Welcome to the board, Michael.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. I'm sorry. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page.
Oh, yeah, so, okay, that's right. For some of the newer Aldermen, I'm sorry, you haven't been through this process before. So when we swear in a new alderperson, we do two roll calls. We do a roll call at the very beginning of the board without them in it, and then after they're sworn in, then we go back and do roll call again. And the reason that is, is because according to the charter, the board decides who's seated. So, you know, there's an election, but after the election, if the Board of Aldermen does not, who does not want to seat the person, the person isn't seated. They're seated once the board decides. And that's done through the resolution that the Alderman of the 7th read. And when we passed and adopted that resolution, that officially seated the Alderman from the 28th. After that seating happens, then we go back to roll call and call the roll with the Alderman from the 28th in it. All right. Madam Clerk?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page.
President.
Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Valmer. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. 20 present, you have quorum.
All right, a quorum being present, everybody's glad we have a quorum. A quorum being present, we will move to introduction of our guest. Alderman from 28th, you're recognized.
What's that on? I don't know how this works. Do I have to do anything to turn it on?
No, I, I, there.
Hello, hello.
All right. Well, I just want to say, you know, I don't want to start my tenure here by, you know, talking way too long in a speech and boring everybody, so I'm going to be really short. And I do want to say, I, you know, thank you to all of you, and I do know a handful of you already, so I think that's been cool that, you know, I see a lot of friendly faces. So that makes us, that's been making this process a little bit easier. So first of all, I just want to thank everybody here for, for, you know, being friendly, for welcoming me. I would also, I think I need to start by really thanking my parents. It's where it all started.
Please stand.
And really did, thank you. Thank you. I mean, I don't, I can't say enough, you know, I, I, I'm privileged. I have a lot of blessings in my life, and it started by having a really solid home growing up, a lot of love in my house, and I think that gave me a good foundation, and I'm just grateful for it. And as Alana said, you know, my friend Judge Mejias, my father, you know, he's, he came over from Cuba when he was in grade school. So, you know, it is pretty remarkable that we have a son of an immigrant that's, you know, been able to become an Alderman in a major city. I think that's pretty, pretty neat. So thank you, Mom and Dad, for everything and for, for, you know, giving me, giving me my foundation and a start in this. And then also, my wife, who if you don't know her, I mean, she's, she's amazing. Everybody that knows her is impressed with her, and I continue to be every day. You know, she's, she's a doctor, she owns her own business, she's an amazing mother, an amazing wife, and, you know, I thank her for everything. My partners here.
Wife, please stand.
Yes, Allison, stand up. Thank you, I appreciate that. And I do want to thank, Alana had a run, or Judge Mejias, I should say, she had, she had a hearing to go to, but I definitely wanted to thank her for being here. My law partner's here, which is really cool. So Ross Davis, we're Davis and Grass, he's picking up a lot of slack. Happy about that. And my kids are on their way, but they're not here, but I hope that when, they're, they're going to walk in, and, you know, I don't need to thank them for anything, but I will say.
We'll come back to you to recognize.
But you guys could definitely meet them, but who I definitely want to thank, and I will, I want to thank her when she's here, too, is my nanny, you know, and again, when I'm talking about having privilege and blessings, I know we have a lot of parents here, and they're probably thinking, oh, that's nice, he's got a nanny. But I am, and it's great, and I legitimately have probably the best nanny in the game with Teresa Rice, my, our nanny. So she's, she's on her way, and I want to give her recognition when she's here, because I wouldn't be able to do all this, any of this without her. So those are kind of, that's, that's my family, she's every bit as much as my family, too. Definitely want to, you know, you know, all my campaign people, I already kind of thanked them. Thank the Democratic Central Committee, you know, for my nomination and for all the trust they've given me and for work. Proud of that. But then, you know, more than that, and the main message, and then I'm going to sit down, is to thank my community for voting for me and for trusting me for this, with this job. You know, we've had a lot of strong alderpeople in the St., in the 28th Ward, so for them to put their trust in me, you know, I think that's, that's, that says something, and I'm honored by that, and I'm humbled by that, and, you know, I hope that I can just do them proud. So, you know, if anybody's watching at home, you know, I know we, we've got all this TV stuff, which is really cool, I got to find out where the cameras are so I can look, I guess I'll look at this one. Yeah. Oh, the light on, that makes sense, I'll hit the light. So if you're listening at home in the 28th Ward, you know, you probably should already have my cell phone number, but reach out if you need anything. I'm trying to kind of, you know, get things on my radar right now. So look forward to working with you and working with the neighborhood and finding what's going on. So that's it, I'm going to sit down. Thank you, everybody, thank you for being here, thank you for voting, for being here so I have a quorum. It's like, oh, no, whenever none of the people show up, didn't happen, so, all right, I'll sit down. Thanks, everybody.
Great job. Alderman from 28th, we all welcome you here to the Board of Aldermen. If there's one piece of advice I can give you is always vote your heart and follow that in any legislative branch, whether you're here in the city of St. Louis in Chicago or LA, it doesn't matter, there's always various different things tugging on you, so it can, the lines can be blurred very easily, and a lot of times it's tough to discern the right thing. So, you know, just follow your heart, and, you know, the things that your mother and father instilled in you, if you let that play out, you're going to do well, and the city will win because of it. So welcome to the Board of Aldermen. Let's all stand and give him a big round of applause. You're going to do some great things here, Alderman from the 28th. Alderman from the 23rd.
I have my microphone there, so I can do this. I'd like to have as my special guest, as always, up in the gallery, my good friend, Greg Meyer.
Any further introductions? Every time you stand up back there, Alderman from the 20th, even if you're close to the Even if you're close to the mic. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you. I would like to have Demetrius Alfred from Local 73 as my honored guest this morning, and also Dave Sweeney, and I'll even steal the Alderman from the 23rd Ward's honored guest, Greg, his friend and confidant, and, you know, always attache, I suppose. So welcome Greg this morning as well, you know, thank you for taking care of the Aldermen from the 25th so diligently, and I do so from the, you know, Steve Conway Memorial
Alderwoman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also going to steal Demetrius as my honored guest, and also Kevin Bailey. Would you please stand? And a person that's not here, Julia Allen, who's very active, very active in my ward, so I'd like to also honor her.
All right. Any further, any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up? Yeah. Since they moved all of the desks around and everything, some of the mics.
All right. Oh, we got this one? All right, here we go. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members of the board, we're gathered here on April 29th. Happy birthday, new Alderman. It's also the Alderman from the 1st birthday today, I believe that's why she's at present. But anyhow, this is Arbor Day, so go out and hug a tree. But more importantly, on this day in 1967, Aretha Franklin released her song, "Respect", and thank you to her for spelling out the word "respect" for Mr. Vacaro from the 23rd learned how to spell from that song and passed his test that day. Thank you.
All right. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated April 14th, 2022, April 18th, 2022, and April 19th, 2022.
Alderman from 10th, you're recognized on approval of the minutes.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes from April 14th and April 18th and April 19th, 2022.
Moved by Alderman from the 10th, seconded by Alderman from 25th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes.
Dispense with line items seven through 10, first reading of board bills. Alderman from the 16th, you're recognized.
Members of the board, I'd like to move to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 14.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 16th, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 23rd, there was someone else, but Alderman from the 23rd, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded, suspend our rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 14, I believe Alderman said. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. 20 aye votes.
My vote is staying the motion, Alderman from the 16th, suspend the rules for purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 14. Madam Clerk, please place the aforementioned Board Bill at the end of our first reading of Board Bills count.
So noted.
Alderman from the 28th, it appears you have some additional guests here, so we're recognizing you before we move forward. All right, they're cute.
I just wanted to officially introduce these two. This is Alex and Cecilia. Can you say hi?
Oh, they're cute.
That's, I had to show them off. And then, as I shouted out earlier, Teresa missed it, this is Teresa Anderson, she's our, very much part of our family, too. That's it.
All right. Teresa, Teresa the nanny, you have to pull the tape later because he was really bragging on you earlier, so we've all been waiting to get an opportunity to see. First, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Two, sponsored by Alderman Page, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on April 13th, 2022, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from F, Neighborhood Commercial District, to D, Multiple Family Dwelling District, and City Block 624, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block 624 and containing emergency clause. an emergency clause. Board Bill Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Negrasia and Alderman Collins Mohammed, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name, Ali Stewart Way pursuant to ordinance 68937, which shall begin at the intersection of Park Avenue and Cardinal Avenue and run east on Park Avenue to the intersection of Park Avenue and Montrose Avenue. Board Bill Four, sponsored by Alderwoman Rice, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission approving the name of a new street within approved REIT subdivision in the city of St. Louis extending between Kings Highway Boulevard on the west to Shaw Boulevard on the east to be named Shaw Avenue. The extension was created during the Kings Highway Bridge Improvement Project. Board Bill Five, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance repealing ordinance 69864 and prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 27th Ward Liquor Control District as established herein for a period of three years from the effective date thereof and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Six, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance repealing Section Two of ordinance 59513 relating to the Board of Aldermen's officers and employees of their removal and replacing it with the new Section Two. Board Bill Seven, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing and directing the direct of streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on the 4,000 block of West Bell Place by blocking said traffic flow at the East Curb Line of North Sarah Street at the intersection of West Bell Place and North Sarah Street. Board Bill Eight, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Academy Avenue and Raymond Avenue regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Academy Avenue and Raymond Avenue and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Nine, sponsored by Alderman Todd, pursuant to ordinance Number 70333 as amended by ordinance Number 71394, an ordinance directing the direct of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the 700 block of Auburn Avenue, 5,100 block of Cabernet Avenues, 3730 block of Cook Avenue, 4,100 block of CD Banks Avenue, 4,400 block of Enright Avenue, 3,700 block of Finney Avenue, 3,800 block of Finney Avenue, 5,100 block of, I'm sorry, 5,000 block of Minerva Avenue, 5,000 block of Ridge Avenue, 4,300 block of Washington Avenue, 5,000 block of Vernon Avenue, and the 5,100 block of Vernon Avenue. Board Bill Ten, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance establishing the Holly Hills Special Business District pursuant to Sections 71.790 through 71.808 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri and setting its boundaries, tax rate, initial rate of levies subject to the approval of qualified voters, and uses to which tax revenue may be put, creating a Board of Commissioners and contain the severability, effectiveness, and emergency clauses. Board Bill Eleven, sponsored by Alderwoman Negrasia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing the Department of Health to accept a local Public Health Disparity Initiative grant award up to $1,326,325 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for the grant purposes of providing funding assistance with local efforts of reducing COVID-19-related disparities, authorizing the expenditures of LPH Disparities Initiative Grant Funds for grant purposes and to fulfill the obligations of said grant and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Twelve, sponsored by President Reed, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement and authorizing the mayor or her designees to apply for and accept funds pursuant to federal appropriation under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 contain a severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, pursuant to ordinance Number 70333 as amended by ordinance Number 71394, an ordinance directing the direct of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the 5,300 block of Arlington Avenue between the intersections of Arlington Avenue and Thackler Avenue and Arlington Avenue, Hornet Avenue, and on the 4,700 block of Beacon between the intersection of Beacon Avenue and Praying Avenue and Beacon Avenue and Bertrand Avenue, on the 4,700 block of Genevieve Avenue between the intersection of Genevieve Avenue, Praying Avenue, and Genevieve Avenue and Bertrand Avenue. Board Bill Fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, an ordinance prohibiting tents and semular shelters regardless of the material in their construction or whether temporary or permanent within the rights, within, within public rights or way, or in a manner that would impede the use of maintenance or public right-of-way containing a definition of public right-of-way. That is the extent of first reading of Board Bills.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill Number 14 to Public Safety.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the HUD's Committee, Board Bill Two, Four, and Twelve; to the Streets Committee, Board Bill Three, Seven, Eight, Nine, and Thirteen; to Public Safety, Board Bill Five and Fourteen; to Personnel Committee, Board Bill Six; Health and Human Services, Board Bill Eleven; and Ways and Means, Board Bill Ten. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
We have none.
We will dispense with line item fourteen through eighteen. Alderman from the, Alderman from the 10th, you recognize, actually, Alderman from the 10th isn't, not there, actually, Alderman from the, just going, Alderman from the 7th, I'm going to recognize you for the motion for the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Okay. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the, from the 7th, entertain a second on that one. Second by Alderman from the 13th, and Alderman from the 23rd, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. First reading, resolutions.
Resolution Seventeen, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer. The Board of Aldermen hereby directs the Ways and Means Committee to hold a public hearing to consider the establishment of the proposed Holly Hills Special Business District on May 11th, 2022 at 1:00 PM via webinar.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution Seventeen.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I move to move Resolution Seventeen to the Ways and Means Committee, please.
Been moved by Alderman from the 13th, seconded by Alderman from the 8th, that we send Resolution Seventeen to Ways and Means, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Seventeen to Ways and Means.
So noted.
Second, any, any further first reading?
That's extended first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, Neighborhood Development will have a meeting at 10:00 AM via webinar. Friday, May 6th, 2022, full board meeting, 10:00 AM via chambers. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further, Alderman from the 15th. We're having a terrible microphone last season here, today. Go to the Steve Conway Memorial microphone, there you go.
All right, we finally found a microphone that works here. I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues for, who wore orange today and who signed on the resolution supporting National Infertility Awareness Week. As many of you know, I have been going through fertility treatment for about a year now. It is the most stressful, financially, emotionally, and physically, you know, journey that I think I've ever been through. I also want to just thank the city of St. Louis, who is listening to folks within city government and is adding fertility insurance to our insurance plan beginning in June. So this is a good reason to come and work for the city. You know, we are doing what we can to add other benefits to support folks within our community, and I really want to thank, you know, the mayor's office and everybody who kind of worked to make this happen, because it does mean a lot, not just to me personally, but I know to a lot of city employees who are also struggling with infertility, and it's good to know that we now have the backing of the city as well. So, thank you.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, this Wednesday, and we'll arrange a time with the clerk, we're going to have a public safety meeting, plan to have the police chief, the public safety director, and the fire chief to go over these reports that we've been getting. Also, we're going to hear Board Bill Number Five and Board Bill Number Fourteen for all those that are interested. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 26th.
This mic on, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I have two announcements first this evening, there's a visual for St. Louis gun violence victims and survivors. It's tonight from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Martin Luther King and Hodyamot is giving through Cure Violence and Employment Connection and the City of St. Louis Health Department and some others, so if anybody can come out and pay our respects for our loved ones and for our community, that's again, this evening from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And I'm glad that Alderman Ballmer brought up that it was Arbor Day, because I would like to invite all of you all to a new 26th Ward for the City of St. Louis Arbor Day Ceremony. It's Thursday, May 5th at 9:00 AM at Ivory Perry Park at Belton Cabin Inn. So you know, the city of St. Louis has been recognized by the National Arbor Day Foundation as a sterling tree city, as a sterling tree in the city, city for USA. So this Arbor Day represents 40 years as a tree city in USA, and the city of St. Louis is getting that acknowledgement. So I'm excited about this, so I hope to see you all there this Thursday, 9:00 AM at Ivory Perry Park. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I have two brief announcements. First, I'd like to announce that in the 17th Ward, the Alderwoman of the 17th, Representative Kimberly Collins and Representative Cory Bush will host a 17th Ward Opioid Crisis Community Listening Session that will take place on Saturday, tomorrow, the 30th, and it will take place in Innovation Hall at 4220 Duncan Avenue in the fair city of St. Louis, Missouri. Second announcement, okay, it's time to have some fun.
All right.
It's time to have big fun. I'd like to invite one and all to come out to the city social event that will take place this afternoon, today, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM on, on Washington Avenue. We're closing down Tucker to 14th. We will have all kinds of events, it will be family-friendly, so come out, join us, have a lot of fun. I will tell you, there will be after-parties at local restaurants and businesses after that 9:00 o'clock time, so look forward to seeing you out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 13th.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members of the Board. Tomorrow morning, there's going to be a huge cleanup, starting both at the Carondelet Recplex and the O'Fallon Recplex, going down 55 and 70 to pick up trash along the interstate that's hosted by many community leaders. Again, 8:00 AM at those various locations, they're going to have dozens of spots to clean up. It is a mostly adults event, but there are opportunities for kids in nearby parks, and a lot of Girl Scout troops, Boy Scout troops are participating, so hope to see you all there. I will be there, I guess rain or shine, so dress appropriately, wear bright colors. I also, it's a little late, but I wanted to recognize the assessor, Michael Dauphin, in the audience today as my special guest, belated. Very proud to have him in Word 13, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 28th, any final announcements, anything you'd like to, you're all good? All right, you're welcome. And just, finally, I'd just like to add this comment. In, you know, in government, when we work in government, solutions are best when they are blended solutions. So as we debate the Board Bills and measures that'll come before this Board, you're going to put your own brand in it, you know, your own upbringing, the, you know, the constituency that you're here to represent, as will I and all the members of the Board individually. And I have to tell you, and I've told this Board over and over again, this is some of the most gifted group of legislators I've met, and I've crisscrossed this country, working with legislative branches, and these folks are really good at what they do, and they express it through their debate. But it's also important to remember that a solution that comes out of this Board with only one, with only, you know, limited view factored into it, is inherently flawed. So if something passes through this Board, and me as the president of the Board, I control it and I don't listen to anything anybody else has to say, it's inherently flawed, because it will not, taking into account the nuances that other people will bring into it based on their upbringing, based on their constituency and their home life. So, so I want to just remind you of that, and also just to, you know, kind of get you in the mind frame that nobody, me, nobody here, nobody working in city government gets 100% of what they want, nor should they, because when you do, you know that that's probably a flawed product, right? And debate the things fiercely, and stand up for what you believe, and, you know, echo those things that your parents raised you to believe, and happy birthday to you. Let's give them one more big round of applause. Alderman from, Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Apparently, there's a party somewhere we were not invited to, as the alderpeople from the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 14th, 17th, 19th, 21st, and 22nd are all AWOL.
Oh, yeah.
But they have given me necessary excuses, thank you.
All right, so you're making a motion to excuse them?
I move to excuse all but the Alderman from the 22nd. No, I move to excuse the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 14th, 17th, 19th, 21st, and 22nd for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from 10th, seconded by Alderman from the 4th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose. Motion carries. You know, Alderman from 28th, we could never get anyone to vote no on that, I don't know why. Alderman from 10th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Alderman from the 28th, also remember this, enjoy this day, this is the most popular you'll ever be. So, go to sleep with that notion, and I move that we adjourn to Friday, May 6th, at 10:00 AM in chambers.
Moved by Alderman from the 10th, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 28th, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose. We stand adjourned.